Hey. I guess we're all here. Start the meeting. Welcome, everyone. We have a lot going on today. The educational showcase has been postponed to a later date. Is there any public comment, a union comment to that tonight? If not, we'll move on to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 7th. Do I have a motion to approve the meetings? Second? Second by Taipei, all those in favor? Opposed, hearing none? We're gonna move into reports, and at this time, I will make, I will ask for a motion to go into executive session. Make a motion by Taipei, seconded by Jeff Olson.
The purpose of this is to discuss personal work history and also collect the marks.
Okay. We're gonna slash. Continue on with the meeting. And the only thing that I have left to report on Chairman's report is motion to revise the slate of officers. Background, in accordance with the bylaws of the Board, eighteen fifteen, if an officer or any officer becomes vacant, office becomes vacant for any reason, the vacancy shall be filled by a board, by the board. Staff transition at the college necessits the need to fill the treasury to complete the current board year. The Chair recommends that the Board of Trustees appoint the following individual as trustee, as treasurer effective May fourteenth, twenty twenty five. That is Fisher Beck. I have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Jim Landrieu, seconded by Grant Preston. All those in favor? Opposed, hearing none? Motion passed. Also, with one last thing in my, is to have a nominating committee. And we have officers coming up in July. So I would ask if Jim Landrieu and, I don't wanna ask Pat again. Wendy would be on it. Okay, thank you. And that concludes my report. We'll move on to the President's report with Dr. Tucker Miller.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm gonna attempt to be extremely brief, given the time. As you know, the state budget was recently passed, and there's some, I would say encouraging news for community colleges within that budget's legislation. The, now they're calling it Reconnect Program, or essentially, this is the pre-community college for adults aged twenty-five to fifty-five in high-demand fields. That did, was part of the final budget legislation. And it was also further restricted to just community colleges, because the House and the Senate had, or Assembly had both, screwed that up. The Assembly and the Senate had both proposed to expand that to the tech sector. So any SUNY or CUNY that offered an associate degree, so that would have, you know, created some unnecessary competition there, I think. There were also, if this was part of the Senate, I believe, one of the, one of the two chambers, finalized in the, in the bill, eight million dollars additional aid for community colleges. We had a meeting with the Chancellor, a couple of meetings since this has happened. And they're intending to follow a similar route that they did last year. Last year, you may recall, they, they put in eight million dollars that was continuing funding, that they were intended to be continuing funding. So this now becomes a sixteen million dollar pool of funding. And that is, the first eight million was restricted to healthcare programs, to mental health services. What we're hearing is that they're gonna apply similar logic to this, this additional eight million dollar investment. They feel it's a really important strategy, because what we were able to do with that eight billion dollars this year really helped convince the, the folks in Albany of the importance and the value, and they saw results, and so they wanna continue that trend. Our capital dollars were a part of the budget, and, you know, there were a few other bits and pieces, but those were the main highlights. The, there, there was discussion, however, that there's, there's language in the budget bill that allows the Department of Budget to, State Division of Budget to revise those budget allocations. It's not the first time that's happened, but their concern is the impact of the, of what's happening at the federal level. That's gonna trickle down to New York State. And so they're, they're essentially reserving the right to hold back on anything that they, they feel is necessary. Also, in, in the New York State Senate news, if you haven't heard, seen, or read, we are now in the presence of greatness. We have a New York State Woman of Distinction with us this evening. Yesterday, Senator Walzick honored Leslie Lanzey as one of the two thousand twenty-five Women of Distinction. It's a very lovely honor, but very well-deserved.
Thank you.
I mean, in true, in true Leslie Lanzey fashion, she said to them, make sure the press release says a lot about FMCC. Less about me, more about the college. We are, we are moving forward with our Welcome Center Electrical Distribution project. The contracts are now fully executed. Glad to have that in hand. The contractor has got the gear ordered, and we anticipate, you know, after commencement, we'll probably start moving people out of the building and in preparation for that. We're also coming up on the committee meetings for the next round of capital projects, which are, at this point, we're gonna start to tackle our central boiler plant piece by piece, because we've got the, you know, the gentleman's agreement, which change at any time with the counties, that they'll, they'll fund up to a million dollars worth of capital projects a year. If we were to replace that central boiler plant all at once, it would far exceed that amount. So we're gonna tackle it piece by piece, and the de-air eater was the part that seems to be the, the most critical to replace at this point. We're also gonna continue with our paving. So we've, we've got this summer, we hope to accomplish about a million dollars worth of paving. So we should be able to tackle quite a bit this year. Obviously, we are, you know, today is, we had the winter coat ceremony for Rad Tech last night, was the nursing. Am I stealing your thunder, Pat? Or anybody? We had nursing last night, Rad Tech today. Tomorrow, C-step. I'm used to, Pat's used to me just, you know, giving his report at other meetings. Tomorrow, we have the award ceremony, and Friday, we have commencement. So it's, it's that time of the year where we get to celebrate everyone. We're looking forward to celebrating Matthew on Friday.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What do we eat with here now, oil or propane?
It's natural gas.
Natural gas, yeah. Hey, any other questions? And Jim Landrieu, thanks you for your report on buildings and ground.
I think I left you a couple nuggets.
You left me one.
All right.
Okay, we'll move on to College Senate Report.
It's included in your packet.
Okay, and Matthew?
I really don't have report.
Okay. And we'll move on to Foundation with Taipei.
It's in your packet. I'm sure you, you read about it. It's not, not long.
Okay. We'll continue on then. If there's no questions for Trustee Taipei, we'll move on to Committee Reports, Finance. Trustee Beck?
Usually, I tell you that I know you all read it in your packet, but we do have some action items to take place. I believe the first one is to accept a motion to approve the budget transfers. I don't have that one. Yeah, you should. But it's okay, I've got it. In the background, as everybody knows, the Board of Trustees approves all budget transfers between budgetary departments that exceed five thousand dollars, and all transfers that affect full-time salary accounts. Budget transfers arise primarily from the need to redistribute budget funding to cover expenses. This budget transfer for twenty-four, twenty-five is needed to cover expenses related to contractual services, maintenance supplies, professional development, software, and college insurance. So I believe we need, we need a motion, Chair?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Amen.
All those in favor? Opposed, hearing none? Motion passed.
Our next item is a motion to, for approval of the tuition and fee schedules. The background is the Board of Trustees annually approves a tuition and fee schedule. The recommendation, tuition and fee schedules for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year was in your packets.
And as we discussed last month at the work session, tuition's remaining level with last year, and with only the change of a couple of minor, for nursing and Rad Tech. Otherwise, it remains the same as it was last year.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second? Second by Trustee Landrieu, all those in favor? Opposed, hearing none? Motion passed.
Next of the last one is a approval for the annual budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. The college is required to adopt an annual budget based on projected revenues and expenses. Both of Montgomery Counties are required to pass resolutions designated their annual level of contributions to the FMCC operating budget, and approval of the total budget amount. Following approval of the proposed budget by sponsored, sponsored counties and the Board of Trustees, this budget will be submitted to the SUNY Board of Trustees for approval. I so move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Second by Trustee Gassi. All those in favor? Opposed, hearing none, motion passed.
The final motion is a motion to authorize the signing of checks. The college maintains a checking account at M&amp;T Bank to pay operating expenses as part of the financial internet control processes. At the college, checks will require the signature of two individuals in accordance with Policy seven zero zero five. In the event of the vacancy in either the President or the Vice President for Administration and Finance, the Board will designate alternatives, alternates from senior administrative staff, grade three or higher. I so move.
A motion, do I have a second? Second by Trustee Preston. All those in favor? Opposed, hearing none? Motion passed.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Beck. We'll move on now to Buildings and Grounds with Trustee Landrieu.
I have one item. I wanna talk real slow. Lands are now in the motion for the renovation of C-019. It matched the cyber lab classroom that we redid last year. And that includes my long detailed report. Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions for Trustee Landrieu? If not, thank you, Trustee Landrieu, for the detailed report. We'll move on to Academic Affairs with Trustee Grant.
Yes, thank you. West, I get my tires slashed in the parking lot. Everything's in the report, but I do have a motion to present, and that is to deactivate some programs. As part of the college's ongoing assessment of academic programs and in consultation with the faculty, the administration has determined that the following programs are no longer viable and should be deactivated. Following an action by the Board of Trustees, the request to deactivate the programs will be forwarded to SUNY and the New York State Education Department. During the three-year deactivation period, the curriculum and resources associated with the programs will be reviewed by the faculty, and any appropriate changes will be considered. Those programs are early childhood, fine arts, physical, physical education, and sport management.
I have a motion by Trustee Preston, do I have a second?
Thank you. No.
Second by
Oh, Matt.
By Trustee Cole. All those in favor? Opposed, hearing none, motion passed. That concludes my report. Thank you, Trustee Preston. And we'll move on to Student Affairs with Trustee Perry.
The full report is in your packet. The only item I have is, we look forward to commencement on Friday to celebrate our students. My report.
Thank you, Trustee Perry. Diversity and inclusion and, we have a report tonight?
No, and I just wanna, it is in your packet, but I wanna mention that, that John is transitioning to a different role. So he, he is stepping down as our Chief Diversity Officer and moving into become our Chief Sustainability Officer, which is another SUNY requirement. Chief Sustainability Officer. It's as exciting as it sounds. So, yeah, we'll be, we'll be hosting that for, for other individuals who may be interested.
Okay. Thank you. Accreditation.
Quick reminders or quick updates. We are at the very end of our self-study process, that being just waiting for the committee to take action on our accreditation status. That should happen over the summer. A small group, subgroup of the Assessment Committee has completed their ILO, their Institutional Learning Outcome Assessment this year. I'll report on that more in the Annual Assessment Report. A reminder to the Board that the trustee evaluation, the board performance survey has gone out. I've gotten a couple of responses so far, so thank you. I'd like to have the remaining responses by Wednesday, June eleventh, so I can give you that, report that information to you at the board meeting on June eighteenth. And that there has been some action at the federal level on reforming accreditation. So there's been an executive order that was dated April twenty-third. And another dear colleague letter from the Department of Education about changes of the approval process for accreditation that was dated May first. So I'm gonna keep my eye on that and report to the Board as, as, as necessary. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions? If not, thank you, Dan. And we'll move on to Personnel. Me and that trustee, Chairman McGee isn't here tonight. You get the pleasure and honor of me acting as personnel. And I have several motions here. My first motion is, background on it is that Leslie Lanzey has been employed at FMCC for fifteen years as Chief Advancement Officer and Executive Director of the Foundation of FMCC. She has served on the leadership team since she's begun her tenure. In addition to the foundation, Ms. Lanzey also serves as the President of the Fulton-Bolmont College Association, and she co-chairs the Marketing Committee. Ms. Lanzey has over thirty years of progressive responsibility experience in the nonprofit and healthcare leadership. A current survey of SUNY community colleges concluded that the appropriate title for the Chief Advancement Officer is at the Vice President level. Modifying the title provides the appropriate recognition for the role and position she has on the campus. It's recommended, the President recommends that Leslie Lanzey be appointed to the position of Vice President of Institutional Advancement and Executive Director of the Foundation of FMCC September first, twenty twenty-five through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And that's in form of a motion. Second by Trustee Landrieu, all those in favor? Opposed, hearing none? Congratulations. Background, the position of Vice President for Student Affairs has been vacated since January twenty twenty-two. From January twenty twenty-two to August twenty twenty-three, a Provost and Vice President for Academic and Student Affairs was played, was in place. Ms. Arlene Spencer has been serving as the Acting Dean for Student Affairs and Chief Student Affairs Officer since September twenty twenty-three, while the college underwent the middle-state self-assessment process. Given turnover with senior leadership over the past three years, Ms. Spencer has provided a stable presence, and she has demonstrated her ability to lead the division. Ms. Spencer has been employed at FMCC for thirty-six years, first as Director of Intern Students, International Students ESL Program, and subsequently serving as Director of Academic Support Services in an international partnership, and Associate Dean of Student Affairs. Prior to her current role, she is a Chancellor Award of Excellence in Professional Service recipient and former Fulbright Scholar. Current survey of SUNY community colleges concluded that the appropriate title for the Chief Student Affairs Officer is the Vice President level. Restoring this position to the Vice President level also reinforces the college's student-centered approach. The President recommends that Ms. Arlene Spencer be appointed to the position of Vice President for Student Affairs from September first, twenty twenty-five through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And that's in form of a motion, do I have a second? Second by Trustee Beck, all those in favor? Opposed, hearing none? Congratulations. Background, the position of Vice President for Academic Affairs has been vacant since January twenty twenty-five. From January twenty, excuse me, January twenty twenty-two, from January twenty twenty-two to August twenty twenty-three, a Provost and Vice President for Academic and Student Affairs was in place. Mr. Patrick Grandy has been serving as the Acting Director, Acting Dean for Academic Affairs and Chief Advancement Officer since September twenty twenty-four, while the college underwent the middle-state self-assessment process. Mr. Grandy has been employed at FMCC for twenty-nine years, advancing from instructor to full professor. Pat served as Division Chair for Mathematics for twelve years, and he was an advanced, an academic advisor for twenty-six years, and has been served, has served many colleges and external committees. He served as President for the Faculty Union for eight years. A current survey of SUNY community colleges concluded that the appropriate title for the Chief Academic Officer is the Vice President level. Restoring this position to the Vice President level also underscores the importance of the academic mission of the college. The President recommends that Mr. Patrick Grandy be appointed to the position of Acting Vice President and Dean of Academic Affairs from September first, twenty twenty-five through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And that's in form of a motion. Second. Second by Trustee Taipei Gassi. All those in favor? Opposed, hearing none? Background, the Board of Trustees Administrative Personnel Policy Outline. Position currently assigned within the administrative staff employment category as well as other titles as may determined by the Board of Trustees are covered by these policies. I think this is yours, Jack. It's policy.
Oh, yeah, it is policy.
That's yours. No, no, I'm gonna let Jack do it. I have the professional tires too.
No, that's, that's personnel.
Personnel, okay. The SUNY Chancellor's Office maintains a list of all appropriate unclassified professional titles for the sixty-four campuses. Each College Board of Trustees is required to approve titles and then submit them to the Chancellor for review. This process is to be followed whenever a new unclassified professional title, title is created or an existing title is modified. Recommendation, to ensure SUNY has an accurate record of our current titles and to comply with this directive, the President recommends approval of the following unclassified professional titles. Coordinator of Student Involvement, Director of Informational Services, Human Resource Administrator, Liberty Partners Program Coordinator, Librarian, Simulator/Lab Coordinator, Vice President of Dean of Academic Affairs, Vice President of Institutional Advancement. And that's in form of a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Trustee Preston, all those in favor? Opposed, hearing none? That concludes Personnel Report. Now to Policy with Trustee Wilson.
This month, I'm very pleased to be able to have a presentation for you. I'll take up the time that Mr. Landrieu had. All right, I'll start with this up. The Board of Trustees Administrative Personnel Policies outline positions currently assigned within the administrative staff employment category as well as other titles as may be determined by the Board of Trustees are covered by these policies. Recommendation, the President recommends that the Board of Trustees recognize the following administrative positions. Vice President and Dean of Academic Affairs, grade five. Vice President for Student Affairs, grade five. Vice President for Administration and Finance, grade five. Vice President for Institutional Advancement, grade three. Director of Facilities, grade three. Associate Dean for Enrollment Management, grade two. Associate Dean for Academic Affairs, grade two. Assistant Dean for Academic Affairs, grade two. The Berser, grade two. Director of C-step/step, grade two. Director of Information Services, grade two. Director of Liberty Partnership Programs, grade one. Director of Behavioral Health, Workforce, Education, and Training, grade one. Senior Accountant, grade one. Human Resource Administrator, grade one. I mean, this in a form of a motion.
I have a motion by Trustee Preston, seconded by Trustee Landrieu, all those, all those in favor? Opposed, hearing none? Motion passed.
Motion to revise Policy thirty fifty-one Title IX. Background, in light of the recent federal court decision vacating the twenty twenty-four Title IX rule, the binding regulatory framework for Title IX enforcement reverts to the principles and provisions of the twenty twenty Title IX rule and the longstanding Title IX regulations outlined in thirty-four Code of Federal Regulations, one oh six at sequence, but excludes the vacated twenty twenty-four Title IX rule. Recommendation, the President recommends that the revised Policy number thirty fifty-one be approved by the Board of Trustees, and I make that in a form of a motion.
Motion by Trustee Wilson, second. Second by Trustee Gassi, all those in favor? Opposed, hearing none? Motion passed.
Motion to revise Policy four thousand Civil Rights. Background, in light of the recent federal court decision vacating the twenty twenty-four Title IX rule, the binding regulatory framework for the Title IX enforcement reverts to the principles and provisions of the twenty twenty Title IX rule and the longstanding Title IX regulations outlined in thirty-four Code of Federal Regulations, one oh six at sequence, but excludes the vacated twenty twenty-four Title IX rule. President recommends that the revised Policy number four thousand be approved by the trustees. I do that in a form of a motion.
I have a motion by Trustee Wilson, seconded by Trustee Preston, all those in favor? Opposed, hearing none, motion passed.
Motion for approved revision of Policy forty twenty Sexual Violence Prevention and Response. Current events have fostered the federal and state governments to review college policies regarding sexual violence prevention and institutional responses which precipitated the need for language modifications. FMCC reviewed its policy and made the changes required. The policy was approved, was reviewed and approved by the college's attorneys and the college assembly. The recommendation, the President recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed revision of Policy forty twenty Sexual Violence Prevention and Response.
I have a motion by Trustee Wilson, do I have a second? Second by Trustee Landrieu, all those in favor? Opposed, hearing none, motion passed.
I'm sorry, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Wilson. Thank you, trustee Wilson.
Not used to, he could talk.
Uh, other than, uh, I, I guess, Matt, you'll be walking across the stage, uh, Friday, so it's been a pleasure having you on the board. Congratulations. Congratulations to you, and hope that, uh, whatever endeavor you choose in the future, you'll be prosper at.
Sure, well, thank you.
Chair.
And, uh, Matt, yes?
I just, I wanted to do one of the diversity, um, equity and inclusion. I just wanted to comment in my short tenure, John did an excellent job on his reporting. He was professional and compassionate, um, with everything that he informed the board on, and just because he's moving to a different position, I just wanted to make note of that in the, in the minutes that he gets an attaboy.
Thank you. Anything else the board needs to, uh, address tonight? If not, congratulations to all the, the recently named, uh, renamed vice presidents and, uh-
Motion. Motion to adjourn.
I want to be vice president of something. Yeah, I think I am.
Motion by, uh, by trustee Preston, seconded by trustee Wilson. Thank you all for coming tonight. Sorry to talk so long.
Thanks. Just don't get a lot of it every next month.